Yes, sir. This is your boy, CEO Hockley, live in the flesh. Yes, this is me, man. We've been putting it down, man, for ten years in a row, like I told y'all. I know I'm new to YouTube. I'm new to the whole social media space outside of my area, right, of Galveston County. But this is what I've been doing, man, and this is one of the reasons why I came on YouTube to show the work and inspire other people to do the work, man. I'm tired of being around people that's always talking about what they could do. Always talking about ideas. Ideas is everywhere, man. Execution ain't. What is missing is execution. So in the time, in the time that it took, boys, to be on YouTube and talk about shit, I've been out building shit, man. And again, I'm not comparing myself to them. When I'm trying to tell y'all, Ali, is, hey, man, I'm here now, and I got the way, I got the work, I got the stuff that needs, that needs to be shown, man, so we can goddamn me understand and get what's going on. So I'm finna play the council meeting video. I played it last night. It ran this morning. Couple y'all have seen it. But at the same time that I'm playing the video, I'm open for questions, man. Some people may want to learn something. Some people may want to congratulate. Some people may want to discuss different things. I mean, I don't, I don't really know. You know what I'm saying? I know y'all, y'all may have a perspective of me by just watching the show, but the council meeting, the, uh, the business stuff that I do, different things that I do, show you another side, you know? Not just the arguing with Percy or arguing on Pico channel, a shit like that, man. You're able to see another side of the actual work of me being a father, me being a husband, me being a businessman, me being a community leader, right? And me being a mentor to many, many people, man. So, uh, we gonna play the video, and if y'all got any questions, anything you want to ask me, hit the link in the chat, call the show, we could talk about it, man. I'm not only here to show, I'm here to teach, man. So let's, uh, kind of get to it, man.
Any further, any further discussion, counsel? Here you go. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nine, three, G County Hope Toy Drive. Nine, three, G County Hope Toy Drive. Discussion, possible action regarding consideration of city support for the 10th Annual G County Hope Toy Drive Giveaway. And I was, there they are. I was told that we have representatives here. Welcome, uh, gentlemen and gentlemen and lady. Uh, if you would, for the record, give us your name, and we know that you all are with the Hope, uh, the Hope Organization, but we definitely need your name for the record.
Okay, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
My name is Darryl Davis. I'm actually here on behalf of Keith Henry. And I'll be greeting, prepare that, Mr. Henry, Commissioner Henry, prepare. And colleagues will have something to say.
Okay.
Okay, so hello and good evening, counsel.
Let me pause it right here real quick and give a little context. So this guy here that is speaking right now, his name is Darryl. He's a representative for, uh, Mr. Keith Henry. Y'all might, y'all don't know who Keith Henry is, but Keith Henry is a representative that decided to get on board with us with the toy drive and help us out. I just played his video, but he wasn't able to be present. He wanted to be present, but he wasn't able to be present. So he, um, let Darryl, he, he wrote a prepared statement so Darryl could speak. So I, I let them read the statement first before I came up. And, uh, just to show y'all who Keith Henry is, I'm gonna play this again. This is Keith Henry, right? He's a former Texas City Commissioner. He's a good friend from mine. We both, uh, from Galveston. And, uh, when he saw the things that we was doing, he saw the work that we was putting in, he was like, hey, Hockley, y'all already got it going on. Y'all already got it figured out, bro. Let me help. I want to help. I want to participate. So he wasn't able to make this meeting, and he wrote a prepared statement and let, um, Darryl read the, the statement. So to open up the meeting, I let, um, Darryl read Keith's prepared statement. But, but this is Keith right here.
G County Toy Drive, CEO Hockley, Ms. Smith, man, I'm so proud of these guys for everything they've done for the community. This is nine years in a row. Next year will be 10. It's phenomenal. I certainly can't take credit for everything that they do. We need the visuals and the community to give back from the communities what they come, they come from, and they continue to give back. I'm super proud of them. Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful day.
Alright, so that's Keith Henry, man. The rea, the reason why I'm bringing that up, um, is because you could be working on something, right? You, you could be doing something, right? Whether it's YouTube, whether it's whatever you doing, right? And you never know who's watching, right? You never know who's paying attention, right? And Keith is one of those people that was watching. Keith was one of those people that was paying attention. And, uh, he got on board. You know what I'm saying? He got on board, and he wanted to show his, um, support and show his love for the real work that we've been doing in the community. So I wanted to tell y'all that, to show y'all that, um, the, the toy drive wasn't started with Keith. It wasn't started by Keith. And it's not about who started, who run it, who doing this. It's everybody being like-minded, putting their thoughts together, and making things work, right? Once, once I invent the wheel, somebody else could put together the car. Do you understand what I'm saying? Yeah, but you gotta get the wheel going. You can't be talking about the wheel. You gotta get the wheel going. And because me and Carla was able to get the wheel going, and we really put in the work, all these different components come in to help and support what we doing, and that just pushed the movement forward. That's why we staying here today with 10 years in. I want to give y'all context to that, because a lot of people you start with ain't gonna be the people you end with. It's people that we started with that ain't here today. But hey, that has nothing to do with us, because our mission and our purpose is to be here every year as long as we breathe.
Thank you for this time. On behalf of Chief, Commissioner Henry, he gives a form of regard as he has business and also to attend to. Before we get started, Commissioner Keith Henry would like to remind City Manager and the Council that the Dallas Cowboys will indeed win some.
The Dallas Cowboys will not win the motherfucking Super Bowl. Let me just mention that. They will not win Keith's line.
Hold a toy drive every Christmas Eve. Will be, this will be our 10th anniversary, providing toys to the underprivileged and underserved communities throughout Galveston County. Notably, each member of the G County Hope Foundation committee contributes an extensive amount of their own funding from $250 to $500. Tonight, we're asking counsel for imaginative efforts for your discretionary funds. Thank you.
How y'all doing? City Council, City Manager, how y'all doing? My name is Robert Hockley. Uh, we actually started this toy drive in 2013. I started this toy drive in 2013, right before opening my business here in Lamar. I have a business in Lamar. It's called G County Apparel, which is right across the street from Lamar High School. Been in business here in the city of Lamar since 2014, right? So as we enter our 10th year of this toy drive, we just want to come before this body and speak and kind of explain some of the things that we have been doing, whether you all heard of us or not, Ms. Anthony. She has heard of us, and a few more people have, have heard of us. Well, with this toy drive, I started with another business owner who's in Texas City, Carla Smith. And what we decided to do 10 years ago was to provide toys to the entire Galveston County. Of course, G County is abbreviation for Galveston County. Right? So we just wanted to include, um, Galveston, Lamar, Texas City, Hitchcock, and Dixon. Where we go to underprivileged areas in each city and pass our toys to the extent of like $25,000 in toys, because we have the cities helping us. We also have toys from TOTs helping us and things like that. And you know, it's very hard doing anything consistently. So 10 years is pretty remarkable for us, right? And for our resources as business owners. Well, Ms. Mary here, you know, along with another business here on Pit Stop and Snow King, decided to join us last year and do some work with us. And what they noticed was that...
Real quick, I'm gonna pause it right there, because now I'm introducing Ms. Mary. So I introduced y'all to Keith. Now I'm introducing Ms. Mary. Ms. Mary is one of the presidents of the Lulac Association. Um, it's Latino something. I don't want to mess up the acronyms that Lulac stand for, but it's, it's, it's for the Hispanic community, right? She's one of the presidents of the Lulac Association here in Lamar, and me and her hooked up probably like two years ago. She's another person that saw what we was doing in the community, saw that it was real, saw that we spending our own money, seeing that people are really celebrating our work and how long that we did it, doing it, excuse me, and she decided to get on board. She got on board, and she's been able to bring other people from her community. Uh, Arnold at Pit Stop, uh, the guy from Snow King, uh, she's able to bring in her resources from her community to bring them with us, right? So that's what I explained to the council, because again, YouTubers or people on here will be stuck on one person. Who runs this? Who do this? Who do that? This is a collective effort, right? Started by me and Carla, right? Putting up our money, right? Making sure that the toy drive work, and then letting everybody else support and be around us, right? And add on, right? Just because we got the money to do it, doesn't mean we shouldn't accept blessings from other people. And that's what we have done here on YouTube, right? We also got blessings from other people here on YouTube, and anybody can donate, anybody could help, right? The more the merrier, right? The more, the more we do it together, the bigger the pile is, man. Yeah, the more we do it together, the bigger the pile is. But we guarantee that the event will go on, because we make sure that we pay for it out of our own pocket and do our own, um, work before we even go around asking for gifts or asking for anything. We make sure that the business is handled on our end before we even move. And that's the same thing you should do. If you're thinking about doing an event or doing a toy drive or doing anything, like Pico was saying in the thing, he want to do something now, right? You, you have to make sure that things are taken care of before you even start asking anybody for something, right? Yeah, this is not that we went out, asked for donations, and we got the toy drive. Listen, I have never in my life took up donations or asked people to give and achieve the goal for that. Yeah, like, for instance, the toy drive is a $25,000 expense. I have never went out and asked people to donate, and I've collected $25,000. Never. I'm not good at that. People telling me, oh, you could do that. You could write grants. I don't know how to do that. Yeah, I've never been good at that. And people and organizations that I see that don't exist or that go away quickly is people that depend on donations. I sell shit, yeah, my whole life. I don't know how to ask nobody for nothing. I know how to sell somebody something. Yes, I understood, um, as a kid, that I was good at transaction. I was good at identifying what people want and providing value and making sales. My whole life, I've been able to sell something to somebody, regardless whether it's a t-shirt, whether it's the club, whether it's drugs, whether, whatever it is, I've been always able to provide a product and sell it. That's just where I'm good at. So when you thinking about starting your organization, don't think about what people gonna give you. Think about what you got. Think about your budget. Think about what you need to do to make sure your toy drive or what, whatever it is, exists. Right now, niggas is taking up toys for Christmas, and they just taking up toys, because they ain't putting no work. They don't even know what budget they gotta get. We have a yearly budget of $25,000 that we gotta hit just for, so we could get the toy drive cracking, just so I could get here and ask people to help us, right? So when you doing these organizations, when you doing these things, that's the key to it, right? The key to it is getting your shit together, getting your shit in line, and doing the work yourself, not depending on donations and other people. But if people give, it is a blessing, because once you do the work and once you had the money, don't act like it's just yours. Yeah, see, I can't just act like this is just mine. Why would I negate other, stop other people blessings just because I got the money to give? It's other people living in their season of abundance, and if we work together, we could give out more, because the more we give, the more we get back. So that's why you see Keith Henry here. That's why you see Mary here. That's why you see a whole lot of people. That's a Keisha, Vicky, that's a part of this toy drive, Felicia, Doc. All these people have been a toy, a part of this toy drive, because we want people to add on to what we build, man, and it's about a community thing. Before I go on with the video, I want to shout out people right here on YouTube that I have met this year on YouTube that I have met just in a few months of doing this show, who are, who in their season of abundance, and they give back, right? They have given back to the toy drive. Right? We want to shout them out real quick before we go on, because again, like, well, damn, Hockley, well, what you doing, man? I'm trying to let you know, man, that it's bigger than just what I'm doing, man. It's about what we doing as a collective. If I win, we all winning, right? If I could show it and do it, you could do it. Shout out to Ms. Mocha Bird. She in the chat, man. Shout out to her. That's Ms. Mocha Bird. Shout out to her for donating, man. Shout out for her to support me. Shout out to the homie Eric Scott. Y'all see him from chat to chat. Man, I think there's only one nigga seeing more super chats than I do. That's Eric, right? I'm a businessman, he a businessman, right? Eric Scott show, Eric Scott show love all across the board, man, to everybody, man. Shout out to Eric Scott, man, for donating, man. Shout out, Ms. Laquinta Levels. Y'all see her in the chat. She telling y'all, hit the like button, hit the subscribe button. She showing love. She has donated, right, with, uh, Beauty Within candles, right? Her service, her business. Again, man, it's about giving back, whether it's $2, $2,500, or $25,000. If you in your season of abundance, it's about giving back, man. It's about working with the people, so we could all have more. Shout out to my guy, Imani. He in the chat. He didn't gave back, man. Shout out to Ms. Puerto Rican Princess Natasha, straight out of Phoenix, Arizona. She didn't gave back, man. You know what I'm saying? Shout out to Dre Too Much, man, the fat guy from San Bernardino. Shout out to Dre Too Much, man. Dre Too Much do everything too much. And he even donate too much, man. So shout out to Dre for, for, for donating, man. And that, that she is. Shout out to Sacramento's finest, News and Shenanigan, for doing her part and donating, man. You know, I just want to give shout outs, man, and acknowledge people, because as I'm praised, I like to acknowledge people that also show love and give, give back also. Right? I just want to do that, because hey, that's who I am, man. That's, that's what CEO Hockley do, man. I'm not bigger than nobody, nigga. Yeah, I'm not bigger than nobody, and, and I'm thankful for all the help and all the support I get, man, because it go to the kids, man. Let, let's keep the show going. But I'm finna introduce Ms. Mary, and she is with the Lulac Community, and she has brought the Hispanic community into the fold of our toy drive and help us diverse the toy drive and help us reach out. She is the one that also, uh, set up this meeting and had this, um, meeting going, and she is the one I didn't want to disappoint and let down, because the work she had put in. She had reached a point in doing her work to where they wanted to see my face, and they wanted me to speak. So I was kind of upset if I would have had missed a meeting. So I came through for her, and I stood on business, man, because she been standing on it. Shout out to Mary. Let's go.
Our last stop was, we considered Lamar was actually across 1765, right? Which was started at the, um, right, and then we moved at the Carver Park, right? Still within the Texas City border. So good stop, Ms. Mary and Snow King, they, they offered a proposition to us to present it before council and be able to move this Lamar stop, that we say is a Lamar stop, and do business and bring it here to the city of Lamar. She has suggested bringing it here to, right here, right? To City Hall, because in each city, we have a representative from their city that, that does it, right? And she has been our representative, and she wants to move it right here. So she has propositioned, and I come in and kind of give some details and explanations about the toy drive and what we do. Um, y'all have computers in front of y'all. It's called G County Hope Foundation dot O R G.
You said G County Hope Foundation?
Correct. Dot org. O R G. We are a, um, federal, federally acknowledged 501(c)(3) company. And like I said, we've been in existence as a toy drive since 2013, as an organization since 2017. And, um, I'd like Ms. Mary to speak now about some of the things.
Good evening, everyone, council, mayor. Um, most of y'all, of course, y'all know me here, but yes, I'm wanting to bring it to here, right here in Lamar. So last year, I didn't realize Carver Park was Texas City. So, um, since I'm hosting it, um, I've gotten together with, I mean, right that fine line. Um, gotten together with Pit Stop, Greg from Snow King, you know, they're willing to help, you know, give cocoa, and we're gonna serve hot dogs into the community. Um, I know last year at Carver Park, we had at least 100 children, families coming out there. Had the Grinch, had a real nice setup, and it was only like a lengthy time of like four hours. So, um, yes, I am looking forward to doing it. Having crafts, music. Um, I think I did give y'all a proposal from the last month. Um, I should have that, or JB might have that. Um, Santa's with, uh, pictures with Santa, and I have the Grinch again. So, uh, I'm hoping I can get your support. You know, I want to bring it here, you know, live from Lamar. I'm also, I know, congratulations, Ms. Liva. Um, of course, I'm a resident Lamar for 18 years now, so I'm looking to do good, positive things. So these guys here are great, and this is my third year, actually. I did first one was in Galveston, then Texas City, and then soon will be my third one, participating. And just the looks on the face, no registrations required. We just, you know, get out there. They're gonna see things going on. Stop in. I think the drop off here is going, what, 3:00? So, um, it's an amazing sight to see when you see this, wow, these toys. They're, we line them up and, um, stay in them out.
And this is a community effort. Again, we have a representative to keep the Texas City, right? Me being a resident of Galveston, but having a business in Lamar, Ms. Mary being a resident in Lamar, and also being a member of the Lulac Committee.
Lulac Committee.
So it's a community effort that we put together grassroots, right? Just to give some hope, you know? And, uh, we kind of say that in our mission, that, uh, you know, you can go so many days without water, you know, so many days without food, but you won't last a second without hope, right? So our thing is to provide hope for people, and we come on December 24th. People ask us all the time, why so late? It's like, well, staying from this community, being a child that was raised on people giving back, right, and being part of the program. We know by the 20th, everybody been gave out their toys. Everybody, the people they had to do, everybody is attending to their families, right? And making sure that things go straight. So we wanted to come on Christmas Eve, which is our 10th year doing, and just make sure that the kids wake up with a new toy that they got a day before, a new bike that they got a day before, a new game that they got a day before. Just to relieve some of the parents of the guilt of not having, of the stress of not having. And that, that, that's our goal. That's our mission. And like you said, we've been here for 10 years, and we're now just showing the work and get to reach out to the city to see if we could begin a partnership or anything like that.
Well, we certainly want to thank you guys, um, for your efforts in the community. We want to thank you all for this organization. And, and I'm open, uh, for us to consider how we, we might be able to help you, help our children, because at, at the end of the day, they're our children, right? And so it's, it takes a village, uh, and we know that to be true. Let's, let's do this. Let's see if council has any questions for this group. Uh, and then, then, then I'm going to ask Gus about, uh, our ability to legally participate uh, in this, and if so, what capacities we might be able to participate. So let's open this up to council. Do we have any questions for these, these, uh?
Uh, Mayor, just to, for clarity's sake, what, what you're asking of us this evening is to waive our permitting fee and another fee, right?
I think we already did that.
We did that already.
We did that already.
We did that, okay. All right.
So basically, what you're asking for is somebody to be here Christmas Eve and open up the building so that you can...
And any discretionary funds that you might want to contribute to it, yeah.
So...
I don't think you're gonna need the actual building.
No, not the parking lot. Okay, perhaps even, okay, okay, parking lot. And discretionary funds. So, so the parking lot, uh, in my experience, my, you know, is definitely something that the council can allow uh, for usage of, for definitely a good cause. The question that I had for Gus is the idea of discretionary funds, if there are any, uh, and could those funds legally be used in this instance?
Sure. So, um, first question, notice, it's noticed, um, for, um, the consideration of city support. So support is financial. That's a, a definition of support. Um, as far as city funds being used for a public purpose, yeah, you know, if city council finds that a public, a public toy drive is a, a public purpose and benefits the community as a whole, that's within y'all's discretion, then there should, there shouldn't be a huge issue with that, um, as, as well as I know in the past, some of you have done, um, your discretionary funds as well. So, all three of those options.
Right. I was gonna say, we, each council for, for benefit of, of the public and for, for council. Every year, council allot, uh, allot itself $5,000 per council district to, uh, do things for their district, for the good of the order, uh, things of that nature. Some of our council members have chosen to, uh, donate to different causes that involve the youth. That's what, that's one of the things that Gus is referring to. The second thing that Gus didn't refer to, that, that I'm going to call to our attention, is the fact that we receive monies from waste management that are earmarked for youth, for youth. They cannot be spend, spent, uh, or expended on anything other than youth activity, programming, uh, and things of that nature. Those are the two options. One is in essence taxpayer money. That would be the council discretionary funds. The other is, is a donation given, uh, to our city, uh, for the purposes of, of assisting our youth. And so those are the two areas that we would even, uh, if there was a consideration that we would have to consider from. But let's back up a little bit and see if that's something that the council would even want to consider doing. I'll open it up.
And, and just for the regular, the April, the toy drive, or newborns to 12 years old.
Okay.
Very good.
And also, I just want to add, it is gonna be for the city residents, um, youth as well, because we don't actually put a flyer out there on floating around on social media. It's basically me getting out here early, telling everybody, which is a busy street right here. Come on out, bring your children, or I have a lot of contacts in our resident, in our city, that I will be sending out direct, um, texts to, to remind them about.
Very good. James, you want, I'm sorry, Kim. James, you want to say something?
If, if y'all need, because I saw something about the guy in a red suit, if you need help with that, please let me know, right?
You're down.
Um, and knowing that it's Christmas Eve, if I remember, last year it was cold, really, really cold.
We volunteer for this.
Get, get with me tomorrow. I'll, I'll go talk to Angela and see what we can do over at the VFW to, at least to get y'all the haul, that way you're inside. Got some heat, not, it's still in the city of Lamar.
I don't mind.
So, because I'd much rather it, last year was, was nasty on Christmas Eve. I remember quite well.
Kim, did you want to?
Uh, first of all, you know, I, I know you guys, you all are grassroots community organizers that love children, and I just thank y'all for being here. Um, and you represent parts of District A as well. So I didn't know, I didn't know why y'all were here. I was like, oh, they're doing, okay, I get it. I get it. So, um, yeah, you stay, because you are so busy. I appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate you being here, because you have done a lot, a lot in Galveston County as far as for, uh, our community, for the, the students of Lamar. You are the go-to guy. So I am honored that you were here before us tonight. Um, Mayor, um, what, what do we spend that money on last year? Did we get a chance to spend that money last year?
It was, it was two hour, uh, it's a part of the...
Oh, one for the internship program. Okay, I was just, um, I, I don't have, um, that is a very good program. Um, I came last year, and I mean, and I've never seen the line so long, and I know now with um, everything that's been happening this year with the economy and inflation and all of that, um, I can imagine it's gonna be even more people this year. So, um, I'm definitely in support of, uh, this program, because I've seen it work. And I'm, and I agree with you. We can, uh, give some of that from waste management, um, that, that'll definitely bless a lot of children.
Counsel, do we have any other questions? Uh, my recommendation to council, if we choose to, my, my recommendation would certainly be to allow for this outfit to, to be a part of our, uh, to, to, to do business on our parking lot. Uh, if we choose to expand funding, I would, uh, just to make sure that, that there is no heartburn in our community. I would recommend that we would do that out of a, you, the youth fund, the, the money waste management donates instead of taxpayer funds, just if, if you can get what I'm saying. Uh, because everyone may not agree, uh, with, 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 uh, this. Uh because everyone may not agree uh with 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 uh this. Uh or maybe they may have different ideas on how to do this, so let's not use taxpayer money if we can use a donation. That's my 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 thoughts on it. The floor is open again. I I will entertain a motion, I.
Caesar clarified something for me. The waste management amount goes, I thought it was Bayou Fest. What was the?
There is a portion of there, there's a donation, one goes to Bayou Fest. One waste manag- management donation goes to Bayou Fest, and then a smaller portion of it goes to the youth. So they donate for two purposes.
And historically, we've used that for the internship program, just I guess since before I got here, that's been the only use to date that I know of today.
How many kids that have, uh how many children did you did you all serve last year? Or our total, do you think how many kids?
Well, on the average, we doing anywhere from fifty to a hundred kids per staff, right? So we're we're not asking specifically for amount, we really just asking. You know, then you all know that, hey, that the city does support this in some capacity, right? And the city does, you know, um send funds to help out, right? So we're looking to give away six hundred toys at this location, a hundred families. Each family is probably like two kids per family, right? And that's what we're looking to do here uh on Christmas Eve.
I will entertain a motion, council, uh to uh allow for the the usage of our. Uh of of city facilities for this toy drive, and I will entertain a motion. Uh to use uh funds from the from the youth donation, and we're not talking about a lot of funds, we don't have a lot of money. Upwards to uh council, we can do five hundred, we can do a thousand dollars, it's 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 up to you as a council. Uh but again, my recommendation that it it comes from the youth uh donation, portion of waste management's donation. I will entertain that motion.
I make a motion that um we use the funds from waste management in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
That that's a, uh do you want to add the use of the facility?
I think that's already here, right?
Oh, you want to add that to that, okay. So you're making a motion to approve uh what's already printed with the addition to making a donation from the waste management youth fund. Of an amount of twenty-five hundred dollars? Is there a second?
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? Does anybody have any any heartburn with the amount of monies? There's no further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Item nine four, that's it guys, you all have uh the permission to use the. Uh use the parking lot as well as the council is going to donate twenty-five hundred dollars from our youth donation fund. To uh bolster y'all's toy drive.
Well, I thank you all very much. Also promote, let your constituents know, have them come out and if y'all can't be out there that. It's a great day, we have Galveston Daily News, we have R forty-five News, we have great coverage on it, they're very familiar with it, so. If y'all have the time or not, just promote it, get them out and let them know. It's three P M.
You see Mr. Garcia, and he can, he can make sure that all of the, what we just did for you guys, you all will be able to receive. I guess, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item nine four memorandum of agreement authorizing a memorandum of un- of understanding with the Galveston County Health District. For first responder reporting of uh naloxone in use of, in use of suspected overdoses.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, so that is right there, man. Put a one in the chat if you can hear me, man. Nah, that's the spiel, man. I appreciate y'all watching that. I'm here to answer all questions, here to give y'all some context to the meeting, like like I've been doing, but um. Yeah, let's talk about it, man. I I seen a, I seen a few things in the chat early on. Chris Hines asked me, was it um? Well, what did Chris ask me? Was it, did I have a note? Or did I have a note? I I I think you asked me, did I have a note or was it written down? No. Ms. Mary had some papers that she gave me, I gave her papers back, like, none of it is is written down, none of it is rehearsed. This is what I do every year, this is what I've been doing for ten years, man. Like, listen, just think about that. It's something I've been doing every year, this is something I've been doing for ten years. There's no re, I don't need a rehearsal. This is what I do all day, every day. This is what it is with me, you know what I'm saying? So uh no, to answer your question, none was rehearsed, nothing was written down for me. That's why I just introduced Ms. Mary so she could explain all the things that she wanted to do. But as it relates to the toy drive, the numbers, the people, the things like that, the intricacy of it, the the websites, this and that. That's all me, bro. This shit been right here. I done paid for this shit, I done put this shit down, this shit is in me, it ain't on me. So no, I didn't have to write anything down. Um, another thing, somebody said in there. They said I had my hands behind my back like I was waiting to hit a number. Well, I ain't gonna even lie to y'all, for me personally. It's hard for me to ask for something, man, you know what I'm saying? I explain that to my wife, even when I was going, I'm like, I'm going for for Ms. Mary so I can support her. But it's hard, it's hard for me to get in front of people, ask for stuff because I'm traumatized by asking for shit. Yeah, I'm traumatized because I'm so used to people telling me no. Yeah, I I'm used to going to places or going to facilities and getting a note. Like I say, I don't know how to raise money. I'm not a raising money type person. I'm on here promoting and telling y'all to donate right here. If you want to give back anything to the G County Hope Foundation, but that's about the extent of it, bro. Like, I don't, I don't know how to, i- if something is going on, we gotta make a bond or make, it's time to sell something. It's time to get it on, like, yeah, I, so I'm just standing up there and again, that's just a prison tactic, man, to keep your hands behind your back. That's the next thing, because I don't want to act on emotions and I don't want to use my hands to speak. That if somebody may be threatened by my conversation. My father always told me that, hey, if you in the right mind and you have the right conversation, the world is yours. If you know how to think and you know how to articulate your world, the world is yours, right? Anything you want is yours. It's one thing that my father taught me, be able to articulate your point, even if you wrong. If you know how to articulate your point and you wrong, you could get understand this from your words. The the language, right? The conversation, the tone, the approach, right? It 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 is your spirit, is your soul, and the minute you know how to articulate your thoughts. And communicate that out your mouth, you become a very powerful person, man. You understand what I'm saying? That's why y'all like a Charleston White or like some of these other people on here because of their articulation of their thoughts and the way they put things together. I'm not that affluent as everybody, but I'm dead ass serious about the things I know and the things I've been through. Now, if I get up here lying, then you'll see a whole bunch of stumbling, fumbling and confused shit, right? But I'm not lying about the shit I believe in and the shit I stand on. Yeah, I don't need no rehearsal, so. Uh being able to communicate and being able to articulate your thoughts makes you powerful. Yeah, makes you very powerful, man, um. Uh, yeah, I I don't really know, um y'all got any other questions? Y'all may want to ask, um. Yeah, what'd he say, uh? Say God is great, look at that. Yeah, man, they show love, man. Shout out to the city of Lamarck. It's always good to be honored, it's always good to be supported, and you already know, man, when I'm leaving up out of there, guess what they saying? When they, when they hitting me, they saying, oh, yeah, we gonna have to give you a day. You, you working on your way to getting your own day, man, keep putting up the work. I'm like, again, man, it's our love on this end, bro. We do this shit for real. We gonna do it regardless, with or without the day, man, we gonna do it. It's some real shit, hardly a good dude. Yeah, man, so again. When I get on here, and uh let's look at all the YouTube famous people on here, right? Let's look at all the famous people, the people that got all the views, right? Let's look at all the people with the views. My numbers are small, right? I got little numbers, right? Nobody watches me and I'm blackballed, right? But let's look at all the people with the views. Let's look at O G Percy. Where do he give back? Well, we ain't just gonna bash him. Where's real tunes give back? This nigga done trademark murder worth. Where's his give back? Nigga channel is jumping, nigga got all the money in the world, right? I mean, he got all the views in the world, but where the money at? Where's your give back? You mean to tell me old Pope, little T-shirt nigga, that's been in prison, old Ferguson nigga, could give away two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? In ten years to his community, and y'all on here with all the views, with all the likes, people cussing me out. Calling me a clout chaser, calling me all kind of things, right? But when are we gonna compete for who gives back the most? When does that happen? When, when do we compete for who gives back the most? When do we compete for who's the best father? Right? When do we compete for who's the best husband? Those competitions ain't brought up, but see, y'all can't get on here and talk about money to me. You can't do that with me because y'all don't help nobody. If you want to know how rich a person is, ask him how many people do he help? Yeah, what's the point of having money if you can't share it? So y'all don't believe in sharing it because y'all ain't got no money, my nigga. It's just as simple as that. That's why when you make a lot of money, they make you pay a lot of taxes. Do you understand that? Yeah, when your ass broke, you get money back. Yeah, when you ain't making a lot of money, they give you money back. It's a reason for that, because when you making a lot of money, right, you have to share it. That's why it works like that. So immediately, when I got in the bracket or where I had to pay taxes, I thought that was bad. Like, damn, why I gotta pay taxes, man? They want all this money, man, I'm finna start hiding this money. Then I realized, the more taxes I pay, the blessed I am. This is what I'm telling you, the more taxes I pay, the blessed I am. That mean everything is working, that mean everything is elevated, right? Yeah, the more taxes I pay, the more money I make. When I understood that and that got in my mind, I get it. So when I get on here and I see these people front like they successful. But but they ain't got, don't give back. Who do you hire? Who do you help? Right? I mean, in real time, who have you contributed to? You mean, you got all this money, you got all this power, you got all this attention and you can't help nobody? But it was like, well, damn, cuz, you done came on here and, yeah, man, we ain't gotta respect you just because you could help people. Fuck you, we don't give a fuck about you. YouTube ain't about that. YouTube is not about helping people. YouTube ain't about this or that. YouTube, no, nigga, you ain't about that, bitch ass nigga. Yeah, you ain't about that, nigga. You ain't about it, because when a nigga show up that got it, now all of a sudden you ain't about it. That's why I know you niggas bullshit, yeah. The next thing I want to uh show y'all real quick before before we go on, before I forget, because y'all know, man, I go. I go slap off on them bitch ass niggas. Them niggas is hoes. Yeah, them niggas is hoes, man. I don't know if y'all seen my live yesterday, but I want to show y'all this live too, real quick. This is the uh mechanic shop, this is the G Custom Mechanic Shop, again. This is my little homie Gerald, straight out of, straight out my neighborhood, Cricket Split, Texas, twenty-eight hundred block. Did ten years, he been home eleven years, and been able to get into this position of owning two mechanic shops. With three facilities in it. I want to show y'all a little bit of this, because I know everybody don't see all my stuff, man. If you hit that notification bell though, you'll be able to see most of it, I believe, man. But um I want to show y'all this also. Yeah, man, once again, man, showing the work. That's the city council meeting. Now, listen. Hold on, hold up, hold up, let me do this. I just showed y'all the city council meeting, right, where I had to go speak. And um shout out to the city of Lamarck and all the council members, especially Ms. Yancy. Um shout out to Keith Bell, man, the mayor, shout out to him, man, shout out to everybody that was up there. I don't know all their names. But uh I definitely appreciate the support. It's nothing like being acknowledged by um the leaders in your community. And the people that write the laws and control things in your community for the work that you done put in, right? So I I don't want to discredit that. Shout out to that, that was a beautiful thing that happened. Uh last night, and I'm glad it was recorded and I'm glad y'all was able to see it. But early in the day, I went live, right, to show y'all. The resource and the network that this G County thing is in, right? So we have a store, G County Apparel, we also have um box truck company, we also have real estate. We have, we have multiple things, and I done showed y'all some of the properties as it relates to real estate. But now I'm showing y'all another business, and it's the mechanic business, it's the auto service business here in Houston, right? And it's called G Customs Auto Works, right? And it's in Texas, I mean, excuse me, it's in um Pearland, and it's also in Houston, right? Two locations with three facilities. So in this video, I'm finna show y'all pulling up to the facility, and y'all gonna be at the seat, some of the work and some of the things we put down right here. If y'all didn't see this. Now, we rolling from the toy drive to actual business. This is why I tell y'all, I don't care about views or care about being monetized on YouTube, because in real life, I'm monetized, right? In real life, we play, employ, employ and invest in real life. Every day, we making and spending money, so I'm not really caught up on the YouTube check at this point, right? I'm not here for that. I'm just here to show the work, because I see niggas be on here lying, and niggas be on here gaming and playing. So let's get to this video, and this is the facility that we got in Pearland, and we got another one in um. What in the streets do business, nigga? We all do business, nigga, we all grown, we all are elevated, nigga. Ain't no buying no motherfucking eight balls, ain't no pulling up at the gas station, nigga. Yeah, we have a business, nigga. I'm finna be fifty years old, nigga. You think I'm selling a nigga a pack? Nigga, please, nigga. This the pack, right here. That's the pack. Uh-oh, uh-oh. Where where Gerald at? Where he at? Quit doing all that barking. No, I'm gonna take it. Look at him, quit doing all that barking. Yeah, this the, this the, this the body shop, brand new, all this shit is brand new. What's up, O G? They got wifey right there, what's good with you? Look, now you throwing up the deuce. Politely, huh? Here we is right here, man. He is at work with his wife and his kids. What's up, baby? What's up, man? I'm trying to tell him, look, I say I'm going to my little homie's shop, and I ain't even saying little homie like he a kid. What I'm saying is, young niggas out here getting to it, nigga. You hear them saying? Who is that? Y'all see that? That is right there, man. You know what I'm saying? That's it there. Fresh. Fresh, and then I got the other shirts too, I got the the Amazon shirts. Yeah, and the hats. It's that real drip, right there, man. It's that real shit. It's that real shit right here, man. Now, let me ask you this, how long you been in automotive business?
Uh, man, since I came home in twenty twelve.
Hold on, man, you came home in twenty twelve, how long you was gone? You was gone nine. So in twenty twelve, what year this is now? Ten years later? Ten years later, you own two, and now this shop just was built. When did you open up over here?
We opened up over here three months ago.
Three months ago? Three months ago?
So then we got-
You got the shop, the building, they go?
Then we got the location out in Clearwood.
Yeah, you got the Clearwood, yeah. And we run, how many employees right now?
Right now. Five employees.
Okay, now let me say it, because when they see me and they see you, they looking for the white man with the money. Tell them you the white man with the money. Yeah, yeah, right here. Now, show me real quick what you doing on this here. This flatbed, a goddamn work truck, right?
So what we got right here, huh? Oil pan gasket that we doing on it. So we got that out. Now I'm starting the brakes.
Right.
At the top, we got the valve cover gaskets that we doing.
Yeah, what I'm just saying, it's real business going on. They think a nigga Crip night. They think a nigga Crip night. Now, I don't need, ain't these for sale, or they getting worked on?
Service, so this the pipeline.
This is the pipeline.
Everything come back here, gotta get into the shop, it get done.
Right.
Push it out through here. Once it make it back here, it's going through here. Once it come out of here, it's going to the other side to collect payment on.
It's going to the other side.
So we kinda got that system going.
Now, listen, I may have some people watching that's mechanics, right? How do they get in touch with you? If they need a job, or they need anything like that?
Uh, man, you can go to Facebook, Instagram, G Customs Auto Work, or Gulf Coast Alignments.
Yeah, right there, G Cup Auto Works dot com.
Yeah.
Of Gulf Coast Alignments.
Dot com.
Dot com.
On Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, uh, Google.
Now, real quick, let's walk, you got a minute? Let's walk to the other shop, the first shop. So the first shop opens up over here. Hold on, wait till we get by this truck that's pulling into the bay. And he act-
The A I S stuff, Advanced Driver Assistance Calibrations, Service Reset. All the newer stuff that's coming with Adapts Probes Control, Lane Keeper Assist, Blind Spot Detection. All that kind of stuff, we gonna be able to calibrate that stuff now.
Now, now, let me ask you this. This sitting over in a cone, I see it got dust on it, right? How much something like this cost, man?
That was thing was thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
Pay with a bunch of other targets.
Yeah.
Those are targets of floor mats that you-
Right.
We got thirty-six grand.
So again, man, we looking for ticks, man. If you know what you doing, pull up, man. Pull up. If you know what you doing, yeah, we, we got the work for you. Look at that. Look at that, man. That's all, that's all, look. Hold on, but see, they don't understand. It's G County Apparel, right? The T-shirt store, G County Apparel, and we got G County Customs. And we off the same block, but where the white man with the money? I know it's a white man around here somewhere. I know it's a white man in this motherfucker somewhere, man. Where is the white guy at, man? We getting the content room together. Tell them what it is. Yeah, we getting the resource room and the content room together, man. Where is the white man? I know it's a white boy somewhere. I know it's a white boy somewhere. This is not laid out like this, and it ain't no white boy. Look, look at this here setup, man. When you come in, man.
I'm saying, another restaurant, keep the restaurant a flame.
Come on, man. Listen, where is the white man at? I know it's a white boy.
I don't know to protect him.
I know it's a white boy. Can't you not listen? How old are you?
Forty, made forty this year.
You made forty this year, you been home since twenty-twelve. Eleven years, and you been able to build all this. This your third facility, and, but you got two locations. Come on, man, let's go to the next spot, man. But again, it's G County Apparel, and it's G Customs. But again, yeah, they say I be capping. They say I'm capped out. They say, they say I'm capped out. Do you hear what I'm telling you? Yeah, man, listen, man. Y'all wouldn't know where to invest no money if y'all, boy, look at here, man. I, hey, listen, I ain't gonna even bore y'all with that winning, man. I can't even bore y'all no more with that winning, niggas say. We ain't even doing no playing, man. I'm just trying to show y'all again, man. C E O ain't doing no capping, man. We taking care of business all day, every day, bro. This what it do, this, this what it's gonna be, this the hill that we gonna die on.